Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the October Conservation Cafe. My name is Denise DiParra, Maryland conservation advocate at Nature Forward. And tonight, we have the honor of having Councilmember Natalie Fani Gonzalez, who is our District Six Councilmember from Montgomery County, join us and be our guest speaker for tonight. I am very honored to have Natalie with us tonight. I was actually, right before we got started, telling, kind of remembering when and when I met Natalie. When I started at Nature Forward, my first project, and actually the biggest running project still, has been doing community outreach at Long Branch. And I met Natalie at one of my first initial meetings doing community outreach with Long Branch and trying to see kind of the lay of the land. And she's been very instrumental and helpful in many ways when she was part of the Planning Board as Vice President of the Planning Board. And I was advocating for more tree protection. She was a great highlight and supporter of many of the Montgomery County Forest Coalition's asks. And of course, most recently with the passage of the updated Forest Conservation Law in Montgomery County earlier this spring. And Natalie has also been a great friend to Nature Forward in general. She was our 2020 Natural Latinos Keynote Speaker. And you can find her keynote speech in our YouTube page. I will also link it up in the chat in a little bit as well. But Natalie has just been awesome, really. And we're so thrilled to invite her back as many times as possible. So I'm really, I'm really glad that she could join us and be with us in today's Conservation Cafe. Especially also because we're in the middle of the Hispanic Heritage Month, which started a little bit over 15 days ago. We're kind of in the middle of it between September 15 and September and October 15. And actually, today, the Montgomery County Council just did the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. And it was fantastic, really. They brought students from Albert Einstein to do a salsa presentation. I had never seen them actually before, so I was really impressed. And you can go to today's, like, October 3rd Council session and you'll see the presentation. And there was a video of many great Latinos that are working various different fields in the county. And that was really impressive as well. And before I pass it on to Natalie, I'm gonna share one more major announcement. Oh, yes, please scan the QR code if you want to read more about Natalie's bio before the presentation. Our big event that's happening in January is the Naturally Latinos Conference, which will be January 24th to the 27th. We will have two days of virtual conference days and two days of in-person. The first in-person will be Friday, January 26th, in the Silver Spring Civic Center. And then we will have outdoor field activities on January 27th throughout the region. So if you want to find out more about it, I will also put the link in the chat, but you can also go to our website, natureforward.org/conferences as well. All right, and with that, with much further ado, I will hand it over to Natalie, who will talk to us about the amazing work that she's been doing as a councilwoman in District Six and what she has done, she's been doing, and what she's been going to be working in the near future. So I'll hand it to you, Natalie.
Thank you so much for the presentation and for inviting me. I think Nature Forward is technically my family. I really enjoy coming to your events, not just a speaker, but also, you know, just part of the audience, because I do get to learn a lot by coming here. So I thank you for all the work you're doing. And if, I would love it if this is also a conversation. You know, you feel free to interrupt me, raise your hand, all the good stuff. Just to share my background, for those who don't know me, again, my name is Natalie Fani Gonzalez. I came to the States, to the US, with my mom when I was 16 years old. I came from Venezuela and I stayed, pretty much. I, like any other immigrant, it was really hard to adjust and to learn the language and to get a associate number and all the challenges that you face when you come to a new country, right? Especially the US. And I, you know, I grew up being very involved in my community. My parents always told me that we need to, that it is our duty to leave the world better than you found it. And that's just part of, you know, they're my moral compass. You know, that's how I was raised. And I am doing my best to teach the same thing to my children. I have two little children. One is already in middle school, sixth grade, and the other one is in elementary school, fifth grade. Very proud of them. And I, you know, my involvement on environmental issues comes from my parents. You know, my, both of my parents, they grew up in farms. I was born in Caracas, which is, you know, a huge city, right? Eight million people. But they grew up in the countryside. So understanding nature and understanding the importance of taking care of our motherland, right, la madre tierra, it's something that I, you know, I was raised thinking that way. And now I'm taking those beliefs into action. When I was on the Planning Board, I felt very passionate about certain issues. And at the beginning, I found lots of challenges. One of them was artificial turf. They used synthetic turf in or on athletic fields and playgrounds. And I think that probably was, I'm pretty sure that was like the first major issue that I tackled when I was on the Planning Board, right from the very beginning, where I disagreed with my colleagues and staff. And it was difficult because I was brand new, I was the youngest. I was the youngest ever on the Planning Board in the first Latinas. It's like a lot of things on my shoulders. And it took a while to get the Parks Department to switch from toxic materials and tire waste in playgrounds, for example. If you follow me all these years and all those sessions, you see how, how like session after session, they went like from "err" to like, "oh, she's got a point." And I think what it was great, it was sad but great, was the, you may remember the Blair High School, the athletic field. Although it's part of MCPS, it was maintained by the Parks Department, one of the major synthetic fields. And they were a lot, so they had this, they had placed this synthetic field there and they had major issues there. So the Parks Department had to deal with the, with the company that made the field and challenges were faced. And there was legal action too. And I think it made them realize that how bad the actual synthetic field was. So it was great that it happened, just because sometimes something bad it has to happen to you for you to like open your eyes and see the light. And I think that made them see the light and how the society has evolved in understanding how, like, for example, in playgrounds, how all those chemicals, you know, micro, the plastics that you find in, in, in the, in that artificial turf that you put on playgrounds, how that end up in the water and how fish eat the stuff and we drink that water, how is that affecting humans too? All the science that has evolved throughout the years has helped shape the thinking of people, including within our staff, to know that you can't go wrong with nature. Natural grass will always be better than anything else. Even if it looks pretty for the first month, at the end of the day, that will go away and you will end up with these toxic materials that will harm our children. So we cannot just buy what the industry is selling to us just because it looks pretty and shiny. It shouldn't work that way. So that fight, I think I, throughout my years and putting my foot down and not letting parks use anything but engineering wood for playgrounds and natural grass, like Bermuda grass for our athletic fields. I mean, they have come to the conclusion that that's just, it's better, it's great for the environment, it's great for athletes, and it's great for children. I shared the story, when my son was one year old, I took him to a playground that had that terrible tire waste in a playground. And it was like a 12 mid, 12 midday, it was really hot. He touched it and he burned. You can't blame me for taking my child to a playground during the summer. You know, you should blame the materials that we used. So I used that story over and over and over in session, like I got through them. So I'm not saying that we're done, there's a lot of work to be done. I asked, now that I'm on the County Council, I asked OLO, OLO is the Office of Legislative Oversight. It's called O, L-O, but I call it OLO because I think it's all cool. And I asked them to do a report. They're like the, it's a research department for the County Council and they're completely independent. So if you have, as a council member, if you have an idea, you tell them, hey, can you investigate this issue and give us the facts? So then after that, we can see how we can act in terms of legislation or funding. So this particular issue, although I have made a lot of progress within the Parks Department, was still need to make a lot of more progress with NCPS. So I asked them to do an analysis of artificial turf versus natural grass and make the case that, you know, the natural grass, it's better for everybody, even financially, if you think, because I mean, some of the points, the people who love artificial, artificial turf make is either that, is natural grass is more expensive or that the, the natural grass is hard to keep players playing, especially after the rain. That's why they like artificial turf. And, and my point is, no, that's just a myth, it's not true. And we can prove it with both the Parks Department, that has more Bermuda grass fields nowadays, and the soccerplex, that has tons of natural grass fields. And at the end of the day, artificial turf is actually more expensive than the natural grass. The key about natural grass fields is that when you place in the engineering portion of it, the stormwater management for the field needs to be, you know, high quality. So when it rains, you know, the stormwater management will do their job. And then the next day, kids can play on the field. That's what it takes. So anyway, and that's like something big that I'm working on right now, that I'm gonna need your help. So that's one thing. The second thing I'm doing on, I'm doing on this same issue is that I, I'm looking at absenteeism within high school students, okay? Like, for example, there's one particular high school in my district. My district is anything between Aspen Hill and Forest Glen, including Wheaton, Kent Mill, Kensington Heights. I have parts of Rockville, North Bethesda, it's very diverse. So I have a particular school, I'm not gonna name the school right now, but it's a high school. Fifty percent of high schoolers don't go to class. Fifty, five zero, that's crazy. So I'm thinking, I'm not on the school board, but I am the Chair of the Economic Development Committee, so I'm thinking workforce. So I came up with this idea of what if we create a program with Montgomery College and the Universities of Shetty Grove and create a program with high schools? Because, you know, they do have different programs to, for high schoolers to take college classes, right? Related to the sports industry and the environment. So for example, you love soccer, who doesn't love soccer? Latinos, we love soccer. And you wanna be a soccer player, you wanna be Pelé, you wanna be Messi, you wanna be one of any of these big players, that's great. But you also need to understand how the field where you play, you know, works, how it gets maintained, there is a science to it, right? So, so I'm creating, hopefully, I'm creating a path for students to join this program. And then the whole goal would be to have the student, besides understanding, in this case, field maintenance, but it could be anything related to the sports industry, right? Could be, if you wanna be a doctor, it could be something focused on doctors for athletes, for example, or the business of, of maintaining an ice rink, whatever you wanna think of in terms of sports industry. So I'm gonna have a session in December in my Economic Development Committee with members of NCPS, University of Maryland, Montgomery College, the Universities of Shetty Grove, and WorkSource Montgomery to build this path of creating this program of, on landscaping and field maintenance, especially natural grass, connected to students and create this pathway for students to understand this field. If you talk to folks in Montgomery Parks or even the soccerplex, they're finding a really hard time getting college graduates who are focused on these fields of maintenance of, of, you know, of athletic fields, for example, who is building that pipeline and using more, or land, MCPS land, to have this, can you imagine having high school students on this type of classes and also working, maintaining their own soccer, natural grass soccer fields or football fields or lacrosse fields, whatever you wanna, you know, whatever game it is? So that's what I'm trying to do. And so anyway, stay tuned for the first session in December and I'll send you the link. I'm crafting the agenda as we speak, but I'm very excited because it links with this whole vision of, of bringing more natural grass and kicking away, you know, all these toxic materials that are around us and we need to, we need to understand why they're not good for us. Economically, they don't make any sense. In terms of our health, they don't make any sense. And in terms of taking care of the planet, they don't make any sense. So anyway, that's one thing I'm working on. The other things that I've been working on, just last week, we finally passed the electric leaf blowers legislation. Yeah, so yeah, that, that was, that was a challenging one, believe it or not. When it came to the County Council back in March, my problem was that the county was not ready to talk about the rebate program to ensure that the landscape workers, who are mostly Latinos and immigrants, were gonna have the economic incentives to move from, from gas to electric? I mean, it's great that we're saying, yeah, let's all go to electric. But if you don't have economic incentive, a rebate program to ensure that the low-income workers can make that transition, then what are we doing? So anyway, long story short, it was a tough session. If you watched, you know what I mean. But it passed not in 10 to 1. And I made the case that it's, we, this is something that we gotta do, especially for low-income immigrant workers who work in this industry. They're the ones smelling all this, you know, emissions that were producing all this gas that is damaging them. So these are folks who, some of them don't even have health insurance. So it's because of them that wanted to do this. Now, yes, you make the, that's also in the environment, it's the health and environmental concern. So anyway, passed. Something else that I've been working on related to environment, you could argue, my first bill was the rent stabilization bill that we passed in July, that was another havoc. What a pain. That was in, if you follow the whole saga, you know what I mean. Again, it was not unanimous, which is fine. I can't vote, so as long as I have six votes, I'm good. But it was, and I say this is part of the environmental agenda just because you do wanna keep and have more housing, especially in your transit, right? So in my district, I have the largest number of Latinos in Montgomery County. They live in my district, District Six. And as you know, we have three metro stations, Wheaton, Glamont, and Forest Glen. And when you have buildings, especially apartment buildings, you know, packed with low-income communities, think of Aspen Hill, Glamont, I wanna make sure that they stay here and that rents are not so high that they're gonna have to move away and move to, you know, other counties like Frederick or Up County, where it's cheaper to live, while they work down county, right? You wanna reduce the commute and you wanna keep families together and not having kids moving from one school to the next school. So anyway, I see it as an environmental issue too. And I, and it passed. And I'm proud of it. And it showed that I have a really thick skin, by the way. I got beat up, man. Big time, still getting beat up by some of my colleagues on this. I lost a lot of, how you say that? Anyway, I, it's, it's hard dealing with a, with a few of my colleagues because of that bill and the leaf blowers do. But it's fine. I, like I said to my husband and my children, you know, I, I got elected to do my job. I have four years to do it. If, if, you know, by the end of my term, if I don't get re-elected or like things change, I know that I did what I had to do with the power that I had at the moment. I live by the moment and period, you know? And, and we'll see. But at the end of the day, you also wanna have, do your job with integrity and knowing that you're doing the right thing because it's the right thing, not because you're getting pushed by certain sectors. And anyway, so that's that. And what else can I share with you? The Forest Conservation Law, the needs that you mentioned at the beginning, I started working on that bill since I was on the Planning Board. I was the one who directed the staff to start working on it. Then I resigned to run for office. And honestly, I thought that whole thing would be done. Once I left and we'll go to the County Council, like the previous council, and that's it? Oh, no, no, no. I came back and that's why we, we took care of it. But it was crazy to think that it started like four years ago, when I was on the council, like when I met you, Denise, like a while back. It took like four years to pass, that's insane! But anyway, it passed. And, and the, oh, the last thing I can share, and then obviously, please ask me questions. I, transportation, right, on the transportation. I, you know, when I ran my race for, for County Council, I, I really pushed the idea of making sure Georgia Avenue was a boulevard for people to walk, bike, roll, take transit and drive. That was like my move, my logo, I say that all the time. And so during my campaign, I met Wes Moore, who's now the governor. And I asked him, hey, you're gonna win. I know you're gonna win and I'm gonna win. So once you win and I win, you gotta promise me that you're gonna come to my district in Wheaton and walk on Georgia Avenue, which belongs to the state, you know, it's a state road, so you can see how dangerous it is. We want, you wanna protect the environment, you wanna, you need to make sure communities are walkable and bikeable, right? So anyway, long story short, the guy, Wes Moore, the governor, followed through his promise and he came to my district. I had to remind him a couple of times. So I, he was so annoyed by me. Actually, his speech, when he came to Wheaton, he started saying, you're councilmember, every time she will see me, she will remind me the promise I made her. So I had to do it, so she will stop asking me to, to come to Wheaton. So anyway, worked. So he came and we were, and we walked from Regina's Restaurant in Georgia Avenue. If you have never been to that restaurant, you should go, it's Mediterranean food, it's so good. It's near the Wheaton Library. And we walked to the metro station. And you know, when you're walking, that's a very different experience as, you know, compared to when you're driving. When you're driving, you don't see that many issues. But when you're walking, you feel the cars, you see the cars going by so fast, you see the lack of shade, you know, not enough trees, that sidewalk is too narrow, that's when you pay attention. So he was walking with me, his eyes started to open up to see all the issues that we have going on. So that meant we had all, I got a lot of press there, lots of press. And I was very overwhelming for him. So, long story short, the guy, the governor said, I, I wanna help you make sure that we, we do the right thing in Wheaton. Also got Guamara, the metro came to. And so after several follow-up meetings, we submitted a grant to the federal government to study Georgia Avenue from where the LA Fitness in Wheaton Mall is all the way to Glamont, that part of that Wheaton, which is in really bad shape in parts of Lake Hill and Burisma Road. Hopefully, I'm really, I think we, we have a big shot of getting the money and the money is to make, and we're talking about millions of dollars to make a study. Those are studies that are really, really expensive, to see what things they need to change in, in Georgia Avenue and Burisma Road to make it friendly for people to walk and bike. And then also got Wheaton Mall, because they're key, right, to make sure that redesigning Wheaton Mall along with Guamara, redesigning the bus bay, so people can walk and bike, you know, throughout the community, can work as you see in Bethesda. Why can't, why can't we have what Bethesda has? Why can't we have it here in Wheaton and other parts of the county? So I'm pushing for that. And so I hopeful, I'm hopeful that will, that will be very positive. And I am also working with a couple of developers on two key projects in my district. On parking lots that are like in a very bad shape near the metro. Those are key places for redevelopment. There's no housing, it's just empty parking lots. So there's one in particular in Glamont that I think is called Aslan. We'll make the announcement at the end of this year. But it will be very transformative because that and alongside with, with what we're doing with S H A in Georgia Avenue to make it a boulevard, plus this whole thing of making that, that connection between high schools and Montgomery College in my district to have kids from Northwood High School, Kennedy High School, Einstein High School understand that environmental issues are part of the economic agenda, that you can make money out of it, that you can love soccer, but understand where you play and you see that connections and get passionate about it. That's all happening in the same area. And I'm, I'm really hoping to make that transformation in that community without displacing anybody, that's the other key thing for me, making sure that community stays. Oh, and the last thing, I forgot. So I created, spoke to organic executive Mark Elrich to create the Wheaton-Glamont Arts and Entertainment Advisory Board. Our first meeting was last week and I had identified a group of artists in, in, you know, in different groups from the Wheaton-Glamont area. And the whole idea is to create like a 5-1-3, like we have in Bethesda. Bethesda has the Bethesda Urban District, but they also have an outside 5-1-3 corporation that works with, with a district. And all the events that you see in Bethesda, they're run by this particular nonprofit. People have no idea, they raise their own funds, all that good stuff. I don't have that in Wheaton, so I'm trying to create something very similar and have an entity where we can see arts and sports as part of the economic development tool that is linked with environment and make a transformation, not just making things pretty, but educating the next generation of environmentalists, who are also gonna be, you know, environmental engineers and architects and in sports and, you know, and athletes that understand where they play and choose grass versus toxic stuff. And let me see, what else? That was a lot. Oh, the last thing, the last thing, I keep saying the last thing. It's a lot going on, lots of stuff happening. I did have, I made a connection with a farmer thanks to my friend Carolyn Taylor. And so I helped this particular farmer have an MOU with Kent Mill Elementary School, which is a Title I school in my district. And the whole idea is for this farmer to start to take the land for that particular school and grow vegetables and food and have the kids participate. But now the question that I'm trying to answer is accessing federal money because this particular farmer needs money to get her, to help her get started in terms of cleaning the land so she can actually start growing food. I already took care of the land, that's like the most expensive thing. But she needs more help in getting funds to clean the site so she can grow. So I had a meeting with a couple of folks in the county and we're And we're trying to figure out ways to raise those funds and, and see where she can apply to take care of that. But that would be amazing if I can, if she can be my pilot, so I can have other MCPS schools in my district to do something similar. I mean, she wants to do more schools, this is the first one. But she needs financial help to make it happen. So anyway, that's something that I'm working on too. That was a lot. I'm gonna pause.
Yes. Thank you, Natalie. That was amazing. I mean, it's, it's just impressive, really, what you've been doing and what you're planning on doing and council is just extraordinary. I mean, the way that you move and connect issues, like it's not just through one lens, but through various lenses. And it's the intersection of health, the environment, transportation, environmental justice. I mean, it's, it's great. I mean, that's really what we need for transformational change. If we are really invested in, in not solving just one issue, but like solving all issues kind of at once. And I, I mean, but you just ended on the note that about accessing, creating in Kent Mills more like community gardens for the school. I know many different parts of the county are interested in doing that in either parkland or in schools or, you know, anywhere there's a little plot of land, I think the closer that we can get sort of fresh food for our families is, it's such an interest and it's, it's amazing that if you can pilot this and sort of have it as an example that, that works, that we can replicate it across the county and you know, maybe even across the state as well. And I, I also really appreciate what you're doing about you know, making more jobs for the youth and connecting it to a need of, you know, maintaining our fields for many reasons, but also creating job, the job opportunities and also environmental opportunities as well to protect the environment.